Okay.
Okay.
It is seven o'clock. Welcome to the August 11th Board of Selectment meeting. All rise please and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We will begin tonight with public audience. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Yes.
I'm very concerned that this board has the attitude that everyone has to go along to get along. The election for the Board of Selectmen should not be a popularity contest. The board approved a $10,000 a year raise from 104.5 to 114 for Tom Cook, first elected as pseudo-town manager. This board approved a $20,000 a year increase for Shawn Kimball, Deputy Director of Administrative Services, from 71,000 to 38,000 to 90,000. This board approved a new position in the selectmen's office for $30 an hour, contract employee to a full-time position of $68,000 without going out to bid with money taken out of the insurance fund. This board approved $4,000 consulting report initiated by Tom Cook to increase these benefits. The consultant stated that first elected Mary Glassman spends only 5% of her time on personnel issues and her salary should be reduced from 113,850 to 75,000. All the salary increases were not approved in the budget and were retroactive to July 1st, 2014, except for first elected Mary Glassman's salary reduction. She will continue to get 113,850 until the election. If Mary Glassman works 5% of her time on town personnel issues, she should receive no more than $20,000. There is also an employee with a salary of $15 an hour to write the first selectmen's news releases. How can this board approve these increases when they never asked for any information on legacy costs and the fact that the taxpayers who voted for them did not approve these increases? How many residents in Simsbury receive $10,000 and $20,000 a year salaries? Both Tom Cook and Shawn Kimball have a "let them eat cake" mentality when negotiating the police union contracts. This week, four residents from the Eno Farms Affordable Housing were evicted, and here's the pictures. And the moving trucks placed at all their possessions in storage. Even the cat was evicted. Eno Farms was initiated during the time when the state was giving town money for affordable housing. The town accepted over $500,000 for infrastructure courts for development of land in the Eno Trust for the poor of Simsbury. From its inception, this development was a fraudulent operation, where the renters were told that they had the ability to own the rental units under the Declaration of Common Interest Ownership Community and a Board of Directors from the renters to manage the property and develop equity through their bank accounts. In 1997, the Attorney General's Office reviewed the complexity of the mismanaged development and sent their findings to first elected Mary Glassman. Stated that this property was to be used for low and very low-income people. The findings stated, quote, "We feel that it is important to comment here that a structure which has a tendency to oust the poor from Eno Farms while preserving units for the use of higher-income families is inconsistent with the Eno's -- famous Eno's purpose," end quote. Tenant income of $68,560 does not meet the requirements for poor and very poor. The Attorney General's report stated the town of Simsbury holds Eno Farms as a trustee or fiduciary. Impressed with the obligation, is the quote, "to hold and manage the land to provide to the poor in a manner consistent with the donor's intent. It is the town's fiduciary responsibility to take whatever steps are necessary to correct them and ensure that the land and now the housing developed there are used to serve the poor," end quote. First elected Mary Glassman has continually dodged the issues over the years during the housing partnership and presently has used her conflicts by not addressing the present issues. However, on Friday, August 1st, 2014, she met with the Eno Farms renters who asked her for intervention in the evictions. She did not intervene, and the evictions took place at 9:00 a.m. Monday, August 4. How can first elected Mary Glassman pick and choose when she is conflicted? At the last Board of Selectment meeting at 8:00 a.m., this board voted to give first elected Mary Glassman $500,000 for a deposit on Betty Hudson's property near the old bridge in a bid for $150,000 for ownership of the property. It appears that this bid was rejected. However, as one member of this board asks first elected Mary Glassman for her written plan for the use and care of the property as first selectmen -- Board, as her written use and care of the property as first selectmen --
Could summarize, Mrs. Collins, after five minutes.
-- asked Deputy First-Elected Nancy Hossi when she proposed money for economic development during the budget process. Is this another insistence of we go along to get along regardless of cost necessity for the purchase? This property will be costly at the taxpayers and should be under private ownership to maintain the $5,000 in taxes and money for the conveyances. This board should not continue with the Friday closing at 1:00 p.m. Many years ago, the Board of Selectmen voted for managers to receive pay for a 40-hour work week, and all others would be paid for 35-hour week. If this proposal passes, the managers will be paid for not working five hours under these guidelines. First elected Mary Glassman elected not to stay until 7:00 p.m. on Mondays. Why should the taxpayers pay for employees not to work? Also, many people expect the offices to be open for marriage licenses and payment of taxes, building permits, et cetera. Dial-a-ride stops at 5:00 p.m., so seniors who do not drive cannot get to the facilities at 7:00 p.m. Many seniors do not drive in the dark. I would like to know why C. Tesla, first elected Mary Glassman's neighbor and past owner Bob's Furniture, Gene Rosenberg, is asking for a resolution authorizing 100% tax abatement for providing solar energy to the International Skating Center. This abatement would reduce their taxes 13,020 and 79,000 over 10 years. Why did Gene Rosenberg, a town resident, choose to have his charitable golf outing at Tunxus Plantation Country Club when Simsbury Farms is available for charitable events? Every loss in revenue increases everyone's taxes. Vote "no." The board should vote "no" on the request to authorize the agreement with Charles Houlihan as special counsel for the purchase of Ethel Walker Open Space.
Okay, we're at six minutes, Mrs. Collins.
I have three more.
Well, you're taking other people's time, so you know. You're over six minutes.
The town should finalize the deal at no cost to town. According to town records, I would like to report that Hot Metal Country Club, Millwright Restaurant, and Dave Richmond have not paid their taxes. First elected -- I'm going to finish. First elected with this board's approval are appropriating money and giving taxpayers like junk and sales and taxpayers' expense. It is time to lead the people, demand professional management with a town manager to our plan of our future. I thank you for that extra time, and I'll be putting my comments on www.simsbury.com and Simsbury Pageant for Joan Coe's blog, in case you're interested in reviewing it.
Thank you very much. Yes, in the back. Yeah.
Barbara Gilnenski, 56, library name. I gave Nancy Hoss a copy of the report from Hingham that was done by Duff Phelps LLC and also some other documents that were generated this past couple of months from Hingham, Massachusetts. Their lawsuit is going to be ongoing, and they have a court date of February 2015. As potable water becomes a scarcer resource and is commoditized for profit, it becomes crucial for local communities to have an understanding of the economics, have control over natural resources, and require accountability to the public. It makes no sense to pay overhead for investors' dividends, corporate profits, and bloated corporate bonuses during recessionary times. Aquarian and McQuary, the holding companies, first priorities are to investors, parent companies, and officers. The consumer is last. Please note the graphs in the material detailing unaccounted-for water in Hingham, Massachusetts during McQuary's ownership of Aquarian. What happened here? Did they divert water to sell to other areas, or did they just do a poor job in responding to infrastructure problems resulting in large leaks? The upcoming trial of February 2015 will give the answers. Please note John Hampton's sponsorship of new legislation for developing a comprehensive water plan for Connecticut. I personally feel no natural resources in Connecticut should be owned by offshore entities who may be exempted from accountability as a result of the new Pacific trade negotiations. Also note the various cost analyses of the report of Carl Jenkins of Duff Phelps LLC. His expertise is in forensic accounting and valuation of companies, and he's highly esteemed. The economics are very clear. The cost of Hingham buying back its water company is still cheaper than supporting stockholders, corporations, and officers, and will result in significant decreased costs over time, as shown in the graph of the study. Many towns in Massachusetts support resisting Aquarian as friends of the court. The expert testimony, the discovery process, and the outcome of the lawsuit will have bearing on Aquarian as a viable alternative to locally-owned water companies that are well-managed. Aquarian has been resistive to negotiations and information sharing with Hingham, Massachusetts. Aquarian also continues to demonstrate predatory acquisition behaviors. The consumer and the community suffer as a result. I encourage the board to act as Hingham has and protect our resources from corporate greed.
Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you. Whoever you're comfortable, yeah, that'd be great. Whoever's comfortable for you. Yeah, that's probably good because SCTV can capture your audio.
My name is Ali Zablitz from 14 Saxton Brook Drive in Simsbury, to whom it may concern. We represent many adults in Simsbury who request to return to weekday access to the Simsbury Farms Pool for lap swim. We believe that adult lap swim needs to be available each midday for the full pool at Simsbury Farms as it always was. Until this season, the full pool at Simsbury Farms was available for lap swim each day before the pool opened for general swim. It is difficult for many of us to safely swim when there are others sharing the lane. Memorial Pool is not an equal or acceptable option. The lane line ropes bruise the skin if bumped into. The shower is not clean. There is no way to control the water temperature, which is too hot for most people. The floor is slippery and not clean. It is not usable for serious lap swimmers. We are taxpayers. We need full midday access when the pool is open to adults only. It is very important for aging adults to have proper exercise with the pool option. Many of us have been forced to go out of town to private facilities this summer, and there are people who cannot afford to do that. We therefore request that you return to full-pool adult lap swim access at Simsbury Farms. All other surrounding towns provide this service. And I have additional names listed of some of the residents who share this concern. Shall I read them?
You can. I'll just enter this into the record, so it'll be on.
Would you prefer I read it, or?
If you'd like to.
Dr. Paul Epstein, Marlene Fine, Sue Paul, Jane R. Sierra, Linda Zabor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It is on our agenda later this evening, so we'll be taking it up for discussion later this evening. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. Gee, Madam First-Elected Woman, I find it odd that this lady gets up and addresses the board on the pool when a year or so ago, we spent around $1 million to renovate the pool. And here we are, and the left hand is not talking to the right hand, as usual, and we have a situation where the pool is for the citizens of Simsbury and the children of Simsbury. And it seems the only people that are benefiting for Simsbury Farm are the golfers. They give millions and millions of dollars for that white elephant of a golf course, and the citizens and the children are totally ignored. But I didn't come here for that today. And the other thing I should note is that on the gentle lady that had mentioned Aquarian Water Company, and she had gone out of her way to mention that Representative Hampton had introduced a bill for the water. And I think it's only right to inform the people, the only people that are going to benefit on that Farmington River are the people that are abutting the property. The chief is here, and I don't know if he'll agree with me or not, but if I happen to walk on that bank of that river and the property that I'm walking across that abuts the river, they decide that they don't want me there, they can call the police and have me evicted and have me prevented from going there. And I'm certain if I keep going there, that I'll do it at my own peril. So here again, I have to, you know, look at this thing and say, everybody's trying to, more or less, they have their own pet horse. And this situation is not benefiting the whole town of Simsbury. It's going to benefit just the very few that abut that river, and you know it and I know it. Now, speaking of the river, I have, we have another incident. It's come to my attention that we're spending anywhere from a quarter of a million dollars to $150,000 to purchase a property from a political horse by the name of Ms. Hudson, who was a senator, Democratic senator, I might add, from Simsbury. She has a property that abuts the Farming -- the Farmington River out here, and she wants to sell it to the town of Simsbury. We're not in the real estate business. And, you know, oddly enough, here again, and I'm going to talk briefly about that, here again, we had the Veterans Monument, and the veterans came to town, and we get all the councilmen, and they tell us how hot they are for the veterans. Farthest thing from the truth. What happened at that meeting? That she came here and she addressed the board, and I had no idea even who she was. And she said, in effect, "The monument, not in my backyard." That's what she said indirectly. She said she didn't want that monument down by her or the flower. The original intent was for the veterans to put that bridge near the flower bridge. There's where they wanted it. And people have come back to me and said it was stopped. And I was told that we're doing everything for veterans on this board. It's the farthest thing from the truth. Now, I don't want to run out of time and be short-circuited, so the first, I'm going to go into the veterans of Simsbury, the American Legion, and the veterans of foreign wars are fundraising to construct a permanent memorial designed to honor all veterans. It will be located at the entrance of the driveway to the Simsbury Public Library. And this is very important. It's very dear to me. Names of the 104 veterans who were residents of Simsbury when they entered military service and died, some made the supreme sacrifice, too, and died while in service to our country will be inscribed on the granite columns. Periods of conflict will range from the American Revolution, where they mustered right in front of this building. And I think a lot of you selectmen forgot what they went to Bunker Hill for. Conflict will range from the American Revolutionary War to our current involvements. And they go in and give the dimensions and everything. Now, the fundraiser, which is in, it's ongoing now, and I suggest if you have a donation, send it to the Simsbury Veterans Memorial Fund, PO Box 1101, Simsbury, Connecticut, And that, to me, that's more important than anything. Here we have people go all the way back to the Revolutionary War. And if anybody doubts and they want facts and they want to see written material regarding these veterans, I suggest you go down to the library or to the Historical Society, or you go right across the street here where they had the tavern and they marched, they used to have a ferry over here. They marched down to the ferry, and they crossed the river, and they went off to Bunker Hill. Windsor, straight to Bunker Hill. And if you know anything about Bunker Hill, there's where Colonel Knowlton, Israel Putnam, and a lot of good people died there for you and I. So getting that things, and the only other thing I'd like to discuss is the fact that I have two lists.
If you could summarize, Mr. Counselor. It's been six minutes.
Let me summarize. I have two lists. I have a list of the Democratic Party's Town Committee, and I have a list of the Republican Party's Town Committee. In view of the fact that there's a Republican primary tomorrow, I'm going to hold back on mentioning what went on with this list, because it's scandalous. But I don't want to involve people that are running. I don't want certain names to be confused. But the other list, you read down this list, it's the good old boys. Everybody comes here, and if you're on this list, you're taken care of. And if you're an ordinary citizen like this lady that came about the pool, forget about it. And that's what's been going on. And I just, and in summary, I just think it has to stop. You can't go on forever. And someday, somebody's going to feel a little excited, and when the canary starts to sing, people are going to go to jail.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Bill Blitz. I'll be rather brief. I had my granddaughter here and took her to Memorial Park Kiddy Pool. And one of the lifeguards there told me that the first foot or foot and a half in the water was very slippery, and we should be real careful, because the kids have, on occasion, slipped back and hit their heads on the actual pool before you go into it. I think that that first foot or foot and a half is slippery and has to be redone. I noticed that the other pool where I also took her is fine. I, having a public health background, being a public health director for 30 years, now retired, thank God, of 166,000 people in eight towns, when I hear something that is an issue for the, particularly for children, I have to speak. And so if you can have somebody at Park and Recreation take care of that first foot or so, because according to lifeguard, people getting into that waiting pool have been slipping and hitting their heads on the actual area before they go in. And that's really not acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Blitz. We'll get our rest manager out there first thing in the morning and take a look at it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for bringing it to my attention. Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Yes, sir.
I'm Brad Cook of 15 Newbury Court, Simsbury. To be brief, I'm just a regular citizen here, and talking about the Simsbury Farms and the pool and the lap swimming. It seems to me that we, our crown jewel, Simsbury Farms Pool, is now being kind of relegated or delegated to one specific subgroup of our community, and that's the ones with young children, whereas lap swimmers don't have any access to it. We get relegated to the memorial pool. And the last time I was there, it was around 4th of July weekend, and I had some friends visiting from out of town, which are small children, so we went to Simsbury Farms. And there was a gentleman there, maybe in his 60s, he wasn't there with his kids, trying to swim laps through the minefield, and he was weaving in and out there. And I was very proud of him, because I'm a lap swimmer, I've been doing it for 30 years. And God bless him, he's a better man than I, but he did it. And it seems to me that we should be able to share that, work it out. And another idea to consider is to just dedicate one lap on the side. I've seen this done in several pools where I swam, literally all over the world, just one end of the pool where you can just rope it off, and the other seven lanes can be open swim for the kids and families, but have one lap, one lane for lap swimming, which works, worked successfully in several other pools throughout the world, literally.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. As I said earlier, it is on our agenda. I did ask the Parks and Rec Director and the Parks and Rec Commission to look at it, and I'm going to report out on that later on our agenda, so thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board this time? Well, thank you all for your comments. We're happy to have you here. We hope you'll stay with us the rest of the night. We'll be here for a while, so you're welcome to join us, and we do appreciate your comments. Thank you. We'll move next to presentation. We have some very wonderful news. The town of Simsbury has received the highest honor the police department can receive. I'm very proud of our department, proud of our chief and our staff, and proud that we started this initiative back when I was here the first time. We were one of the first towns in Connecticut to apply for accreditation, so I'll call on our chief to report the good news. The chief, welcome.
I'm just going to take a couple of minutes or a couple of rotations and turn it over to Captain Bolter, who is accreditation manager. We began this process here and became state-accredited early on in the year 2002. So we've been working on this for roughly 15 years, and before that, I know Mrs. Glassman was working on it before I arrived. Very prestigious award to receive. There are only a limited amount of agencies in the state of Connecticut, 13 of them to be exact, that are nationally accredited agencies. And I'll turn it over to Captain Bolter, who will do a slide presentation, so you don't have to just listen to me speak.
Thank you, chief. We love listening to you. It's okay.
You have to call the chief in West Hartford. I have to call the chief in West Hartford.
All these modern fixtures, the young guys are right up on all this stuff. Young. Pretty young.
Young, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So, as the chief said, we are both state and nationally accredited. The state program is put on through the Police Officers Standards and Training Council, and the national accreditation is through an organization called CALEA. CALEA is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. We first began this in, for CALEA, in 2005, and we received our first, I'm sorry, 2008, and we received our first CALEA accreditation in 2011. Currently, in Connecticut, there are 17 accredited law enforcement agencies, and they're all listed up there for your quick look. If you take out the universities and the state police and the Connecticut State Capitol Police, we're at 13. There's 13 municipalities that are, policemen's municipalities that are accredited in Connecticut. In New England, there are only 13. I'm sorry, in New England, there are only 33. Majority of those in New England are Connecticut and Rhode Island. But there are a lot of other agencies that are in that first three-year phase where they're trying to become CALEA accredited. In the United States, there are only 400 accredited municipality police agencies, so we are lucky to be part of a very unique group of police departments. So based on our department size, we had to demonstrate basically compliance with 320 mandatory standards. And I'll just very briefly go over what those are in a moment. In addition to 320, there were also 86 other than mandatory that were basically elected standards, that we needed to comply with 80% of those standards. So the standards basically are best practices in the agency role and responsibilities. There's a list up there, and I won't go through all of those, but crime prevention, crimes analysis, personnel operations training, et cetera. And this is an example of one standard, and I won't go And this is an example of one standard, and I won't go through it entirely, but basically talks about a written directive establishes a field training program for all newly sworn officers, and then it has about eight or so different lines that you have to show that you're doing over the course of every year, each one of those things, for each of the three years that you're in the process. Some of them have that many, others have one, others have more. Sometimes we have to report things on a quarterly basis. This particular one is on an annual basis. So over the last three years since our first accreditation in 2011 for KLEA, we've maintained these documentations and practices to comply with all the standards. We went through a different process this time around. We use a cloud-based program to keep all of our material together. In years past, we had all these folders, and we had to mail those off to the assessors several months before our accreditation onsite evaluation, and there was the worry about sending off our files and not making it to the destination or getting mixed up and such. So we went through a new system called Power DMS. To help us through the program, we belong to Contact, the Connecticut Police Accreditation Coalition, which is a mixture of both state of Connecticut and KLEA accredited agencies, all working toward the same goal. We share resources and information with each other. We talk about best practices that relate to Connecticut and how to use those standards that KLEA has brought forward. And we use them for a mock onsite assessment. So in February of this year, we had 15 or so members from other accredited agencies come here and look through all of our files. Our KLEA assessors were assigned to us back in February. They were Chief Douglas Goodman of the Ashland, Virginia Police Department and Lieutenant Pamela Coons from the DeKalb County, Georgia Police Department. In early March 2004, we granted them access to that cloud-based software to see all of our files for them to start to go through, and our review started. March 30th of this year, the two KLEA assessors arrived here. They arrived on a Sunday. They were met by a great amount of our staff members, brought them through the facility, gave them a tour, and they began their evaluation of the facilities and interviewing our personnel, doing ride-alongs, and they continued their file examination. Their findings were that we were compliant with the 320 mandatory standards, and then out of the 86 other than mandatory standards, we were in compliance with 79 of those, which was 91.86%. They only asked that you're in compliance with 80%, so we far exceeded that and looked back at what we did in 2011 and saw a jump from 86.9% up to 91, almost 92%. So there were a total of 399 standards that we were in compliance with. These are just a couple quotes from the assessors. Chief Goodman said, "The assessing team concurred that the accreditation standards are well-woven into the professional fabric of the police department. The community should be proud of its police force. All agency members showed exemplary teamwork, cohesiveness, et cetera." Lieutenant Coons said, "The best property and evidence inspections and audits I have ever seen as an assessor. It was a pleasure working with a department that truly serves their community. You really have something special in Simsbury." Some very, very positive feedback from the assessors after spending so much time in our files and meeting our public, meeting a lot of the town employees. They actually spoke with many people in town. We organized people to come in and speak with them and freely speak their mind and let them know what their concerns are, what they've seen over the years, what they see as positive and they see as negative. And it was very, very positive. So a couple of months passed from our onsite where they were here, and Officer Dunn and I went to Schaumburg, Illinois. They have three conferences every year in different locations. This happened to be our location, and we went there for a brief hearing. They nominated us or voted us for full accreditation, and then we received our award at the banquet. So this is a copy of our award. There were roughly 100 other agencies that were becoming re-accredited and some that were getting their brand-new accreditation. It was a very good, very good process for us, and we're very pleased, and starting right in with the next three-year process.
Well, thank you, Captain Bolter. Nice presentation, and I ask the Board of Selectmen to join me in congratulating the chief, the captain of the department, for their wonderful honor on behalf of the conference. And having participated, I think the process was very open. The public had a, there was a public hearing, and I know I spoke, and I think Lisa spoke, and a few other folks spoke in favor of accreditation. But I think it's also, Mrs. Co spoke in favor as well, and I think it's really important that not only is this a wonderful honor for the department and the town of Simsbury, but also I think it shows our taxpayers that our officers are trained at the highest standards, and that's what we provide that service to our residents. So I think it adds another layer of protection to our residents, and I think it shows that you're really have run a wonderful department, so congratulations. Well done.
Going to give you a little bulletin, gives you an idea on accreditation.
I guess I should say there is a cost because this is timely. There's a lot of documentation, and so I thank the Board of Selectmen and the public, the taxpayers, for supporting these efforts because without support of the department, we couldn't do this.
If we didn't have the support of the Board of Selectmen and the public, we couldn't accomplish what we accomplished, which takes quite a bit of work to do it. Takes Captain as a accreditation manager, and takes Tracy Dunn as a facilitator, who is an English teacher on the job. One of the programs I'd like to show you now is part of our commitment to the community, and this has to do with what we call the Junior Police Academy, which stopped last week. It's a week-long program. We had 24 of our Simsbury kids involved in it, and this is just a little snip of a trailer that we put together that people will be able to draw from as they go into the computer.
And it was a great group. Thanks, chief, and all your officers. It takes a lot of work to bring these campers in for a week, and we had graduation on Friday, and it was a lot of fun to see the kids, and I think it's a great, positive experience that they have interacting with officers in a positive way.
Absolutely. They may have been a little bit scared of us.
That's a good thing. So did the adults.
But they leave as respectful to us and respect, and we in turn learn from them and give them the respect that they look forward to. It's a lot of fun. I enjoy it. I went through some obstacle course myself.
I'd like to see a video of that. Yeah, is that in here?
A little walk the wire. A little help from people holding me in the car.
Just not able to play, I don't think.
All right, sing it.
Sing it. You haven't heard me sing. There's no one.
Well, if you can't.
I can follow up on the, at our next little.
Great. When you get it working, we'll circle back.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move now to updates. First selectman's report. Just wanted to let the Board of Selectmen and the town know that we have added a new dial-a-ride van to our fleet. I want to thank the generous donations of Simsbury residents. We now have a new 14-passenger dial-a-ride vehicle to support transporting our seniors and persons with disabilities. This is one of two vehicles that the town owns. The dial-a-ride program provides about 180 rides per week, which really makes a difference to those who need to use our services. I'd like to thank Mickey LaCourse Beck and her staff for helping us accommodate this new vehicle, so we're happy to have it on the road. Also wanted to report that it's back to school shortly, and our social service department is sponsoring back-to-school assistance for folks who need it. It's a confidential program that we run. It provides assistance to eligible families, and they can get expenses in helping their kids go back to school, and it includes funds for backpacks and many of the expensive items that are required when you go back to school. So if anyone would like more information confidentially, you can contact our social service department at 860-658-3283. I want to announce there is a East Coast Greenway, and the Farmington Valley Trails Council will sponsor a ride on September 13th with Connecticut Tourism to build a support for two gaps on the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail and promoting the trail as a venue for bicycle tourism in Connecticut. The ride is ideal for anyone who wants to participate in any way at all. The trip begins at 6:00 a.m. from the New Haven Green and ends in Southwick, Massachusetts at about 2:00 or later for some of us slow riders. The ride will stop first in Cheshire, then in Plainville, and the third stop, I'm proud to say, Simsbury will be hosting a lunch paid for by the Farmington Trails Council and the state of Connecticut, and it will be right here in Simsbury at Simsbury Meadows, and Connecticut's first bike-friendly community. There's a $20 donation for participants to cover costs, and that's being organized through Connecticut Tourism, and there's more information on our website. We also have a picnic in the park program sponsored by the Aging and Disability Commissions that will be held on Saturday, August 23rd. We are hosting that on St. Catherine of Siena Church again, and special thanks to them for partnering with us. Food will be served from 12:15 to 1:15, and dancing to the music of Sponge Pummels. I can't tell you what that's about, but I'm sure it'll be great. And the event is free, so if you know anyone who would like to attend, it's for Simsbury residents and also those with disabilities and their friends. I wanted to report that Simsbury was named a top 10 fan favorite town, part of Connecticut's Still Revolutionary Fan Favorite Campaign. We were informed by the State of Connecticut Office of Tourism that Simsbury and the old Drake Hill Bridge have been selected as one of the top 10 Connecticut Still Revolutionary Fan Favorite towns and destinations of 2014. So I want to thank everybody who voted for Simsbury, and more importantly, everything that, we put this together very quickly. We heard of the campaign and then worked on a shoestring to produce a video at no cost to the town, and we were able to get folks to vote, and as a result, we will be listed in free advertising as one of the top 10 attractions, so congratulations. And Simsbury also did get another honor. There's a new organization called Nerd Wallet, and it has identified Simsbury as one of the top 10 places for home ownership in Connecticut. So we're really excited. All of our awards will go on our website, which makes Simsbury attractive to businesses and to people looking for homes and for locating. The announcement states, "No description of Simsbury would be adequate if it didn't mention Simsbury Performing Arts Center, whose guests include the Hartford Symphony, Willie Nelson, and Lynyrd Skynyrd." So congratulations to everyone. We'll now move to action items, and we get to the business of the town. The first is the approval of the tax refunds. This is an annual, monthly event, or weekly, every time the Board of Selectmen meets, our tax collector reviews who has owed taxes. It can only be done by the tax collector, and the Board of Selectmen must follow state statutes in refunding those dollars. So you have before you a list of refunds totaling $87,108.01. These have all been reviewed by the tax collector and are recommended for board approval. Can I have a motion to approve? Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is to approve acceptance of Highway Safety Grant in the amount of $22,000 and to create a special revenue account for receipt of funds. I'd like to thank the chief. We have a very aggressive town staff that we review all of the notices for grants, and we're very aggressive in applying for those when we receive them. We bring them to the Board of Selectmen, and we also apply for grants in particular that don't have a contribution by the town. And I want to thank the chief for applying for this Highway Safety Grant application. It will be used for the police department to help with speed enforcement operations and to purchase two speed-measuring devices. And I'd like a motion to approve. Second. Chief, did you want to add anything to that?
It's something about rural roads that had to supplement our usual patrol that we have up there for traffic enforcement. It will replace some of our older equipment by purchase of two radar measuring devices. We were identified as an area that in fact needed to have extra enforcement in the back roads of Simsbury because of the speed that people travel in our time.
Do you find that the devices do help control speed, and they are deterrent to folks to slow down?
These are actual radar guns that we use for giving tickets.
Even better.
Even better.
Except if you're driving too fast. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is.
Could we interrupt you?
Yes, are you ready to go? Thank you.
Give a little break, a little breathing room.
No volume.
There you go.
Yeah, it's supposed to go through this, but, all right, we'll do it again.
Where's the popcorn? It's not really.
That was put together by one of the cadets.
That's scary.
Very nice.
That's pretty cool.
He's hired. He's hired.
Probably in five minutes, right?
Yes.
That's great.
He showed us, he showed us a few things.
Well, congratulations. Well done. Thank you for sharing.
He's now the IT guy.
Our next item is a very generous donation. We're sorry for the loss of a very active resident, Jewel Gottman, and she passed just recently, and she was very active, as many of you know, in many organizations, particularly Simsbury Library, Chamber of Commerce. In her passing, she did remember the library and wanted to do something special, and she donated $25,000 to the library. So we're very humbled and very appreciative of her thinking of the town in this way. It's a very generous gift, and I know that the library board and will use the funds in a very special way, and I did want to recognize that we have Marion O'Neil here, who chairs the library board, and Gail Ryan is also here from the library board. So I wanted to thank you in working closely with Jewel, and I just want to give you an opportunity to comment.
Yeah, I just heard a few things. It was July 29, 2013. Simsbury lost a real hometown hero in Jewel Gottman. She lived in Simsbury for 52 years and spent all of those years working to make Simsbury the best community that you can. She was dedicated to making the lives of all the residents in Simsbury a better place to live, and she did this by the organizations she was in, the personal contexts she had. She was in a number of, as you said, organizations. She served on the Simsbury Board of Education. She was their chairman. She served on the Board of Ethics of our SCTV Board. She served as chairman of the Simsbury Charter Revision Committee. She served as the Drake Hill Flower Bridge Board. She served on the Simsbury Main Street Partnership Board. She was president of the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, was instrumental in starting the ABC Council. She also serves as chairman of the Simsbury Republican Town Committee. She was honored by the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. It was the first woman selected to be the Simsbury Business Leader of the Year, and truly was honored as a Simsbury hometown hero. Over the years, Jewel developed a love for the Simsbury, really advocated for its mission, which is to provide access and services to all ages and to make sure that residents have the opportunity of growing knowledge and access to information through all media. When her husband died in 1994, she made a very generous gift at that time in his honor. In 2008, with the expansion of the library, she funded the Business Resource Center in his name, and she wasn't forgiving, and with her passage, she did between the library $25,000. So I'm just here tonight to, one, publicly acknowledge what a wonderful person she was, what a wonderful resident, and to ask for your acceptance of the gift.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a very nice tribute. Thank you, Mary Ann. Thanks to you and the board for all you do for free to run the board and to really support the library. We're very fortunate. So can I have a motion to accept the gift with our thanks?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Why don't we just take a moment to just silently remember Jewel? Thank you. We'll move to approval of the gift of a bench for use in the Pincho Sycamore Tree Park in memory of Pauline Schwartz. We don't have a lot of information on Pauline, but we do know that Marcia Mulligan wanted us to receive this gift in memory of her mother, who passed away in June. I think this is a wonderful tribute. At the bench, it was of the bench in her memory. It's certainly generous. They're residents of Simsbury, the Mulligans, and they would like to honor her, the value of the bench, which would cost the town about $1,200, and then additional funds for engraving. I think it's a nice way to honor a loved one, and we're certainly very appreciative of this gift. So I'd ask for a motion to accept the gift as well. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is to approve the public gathering permit applications for the following events: For St. Bernard's on the Green, Tariffle Green, August 23rd; Trinity Church Fair, September 14th; and Pumpkin Patch on October 8th through November 2nd; Latimer Lane PTO Road Race and Fun Run, September 14th. And all of these have been reviewed by staff and come recommended through the public gathering permit process and seek Board of Selectmen approval. Can I have a motion to approve? So moved.
I'll second that one.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve fiscal year 2014 interdepartmental budget transfers and intra-departmental transfers. I think we'll be talking about these together, so we can certainly discuss them together. First, I want to thank Sean Kimball, who started our budget process, for all his hard work, and to thank Joe Manzini for coming in and at the right time and completing our budget process. So I really appreciate all the hard work that comes before you. The good news is, the town of Simsbury will be returning in excess of $80,000 to the general fund. I want to thank our department heads for being very careful in their expenditures. We don't have a staff that goes out and spends all of their money at the end of the fiscal year in order not to give it back to the town. And so as a result, our staff is very frugal, and we do return money every year to the general fund. And as a result, our reserves and our piggy bank grow each year, which makes our AAA bond rating all the more important and all the richer. So first, wanted to acknowledge that our finance director will be highlighting all the end-of-the-year transfers, but we know we're returning at least $80,000 to the general fund. Just to walk through quickly the format, and then the board can ask the finance director any questions that you'd like. What we did is, Joe has a new format this year. Thank you, Joe. I think it's a very detailed format. It's also a very clean format and allows the board to see what the transfers are, where they're coming from, and where they're going to. Based on our charter, any line item transfer has to be done by the Board of Selectmen. So if the board, if the town departments have extra money in one account, they need Board of Selectmen authorization to move it to their own internal account. So we work very closely with the finance director throughout the year to make sure that the departments can stay within budget. Oftentimes, you know, there are items in a budget that may be unpredictable. For example, many of the line items you'll see may be over in one account because of advertising. That's really a problem, because you don't know how many jobs will be vacant in the course of a year. So you'll see, some years you'll have extra money in the advertising budget, but some years, as in this year, you'll see, oh, we had a number of retirements, unprecedented number of retirements. So the advertising budget will be higher. As a result, we save money in other line items so that that line item will budget. However, the Board of Selectmen must transfer those line items. In addition, one department can't transfer funds into another department without Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance approval. So there's really two checks of balances. Well, really, three. First, there's staff review by myself and the finance director. Then there's Board of Selectmen review. And in the course of transferring from all the departments, there's Board of Finance review as well. So we keep a close eye on the taxpayers' dollars. So you'll see in the detailed budget transfers, the interdepartmental transfers, and then you'll see in the Board of Finance, intra-department transfers, transfers within departments. There's one error on the accounting, and if you look at the red and green sheet, in reviewing and going through all of our expenditures, we did discover that in Social Services, the amount that's to be transferred there was as a result of the wrong code put in by the staff person for Dial-A-Ride. So while that line item is showing a $5,000 deficit in the Dial-A-Ride account, and in fact, there was enough money to cover the account, but it was coded wrong. So that's just to let you know that that, we did not overrun the Social Service Department budget. So with that, I will be happy to take any questions. I wish Joe were going to talk. Oh, okay. Does anybody have any questions?
If I were to actually go to this one first, I think this is the one we were talking about first. All right, simple color coding, right? Green good, red bad. Provided every single line item that you guys have budgets for. Now, end-of-year transfers, these are always excessively confusing to mildly confusing. They're generally uncomfortable, because we're not asking for permission. This is more about forgiveness, unfortunately. The good thing is, you know, you guys have already done some significant transfers up to this point that fixed a lot of the deficits that were out there. What you have right now is some of the stuff that remained, that we didn't do transfers before. So I can either, we can either go page by page, or I can just draw your attention to the high flyers. I will default to you guys.
I think that, at this point in time, we just take questions, because the board may have specific questions.
I'd like to hear about some of the high flyers, I think.
All right.
The first one, administrative services. I think you've mentioned it in your memo, but there's a few big numbers there, and I don't know if that's a result of our budgeting, or is it something that's happening?
Yeah.
The first one I'll draw attention to is telephones. That one's over by about $15,000. Very large number. So historically, this wasn't something that's been managed by the IT department. It is now going under that purview. On this Thursday, I have a company by the name of Spyglass coming in. Spyglass has been giving all of our bills for the better part of the last year. They're doing an analysis on where we can see, where we can save money. So do I know whether this is a planning error or a cost error? I'm not sure yet.
We didn't see this spike last year, so what we're looking at is changing the telephone systems. We did upgrade it several years ago, but obviously, we're seeing costs increase, so we're looking at that. The other contributory in that line item was the fact that we did have Sean Kimball transfer his salary increase as he became acting finance director. So that's where we budgeted for that increase and reduced other line items, but that's why you saw the increase in that as well.
She's down into admin services.
Right.
Admin.
Yeah, but I'm saying the overall, general.
Do you make recommendations during budget time to correct for some of these things that were going to be?
Yeah, well, as we go through this budgeting process, you guys are going to see a little bit more information. I rely heavily on trending. So historical figures are pretty much worth.
We use this, exactly. We use this as a basis to be next year's budget. One of the things that Joe's going to be implementing also is what we've asked for and didn't receive in the past, and that is quarterly reports. And department heads will actually have more access to their budgets than they've had in the past, so they can manage them more closely as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, it would be nice for us, for all of us, I think, to see this as we progress through the year, so that when we get to budget time...
That wasn't something that was possible before, but something that we, when we were interviewing our finance directors, we made it very clear that we wanted more reporting capability. So Joe's done a great job.
You'll get year-to-date actuals every quarter with, I call it, an end-of-period forecast, which is just going to be based on trends, positive or negative. Any negatives will be hit in the department heads for, you know, either corrective actions or explanations.
When is that first quarterly?
What's that?
When is the next quarterly?
It would be the end of September, so probably October 15th.
You mentioned budgetary concerns with respect to building and maintenance, library and town offices. Do you want to just expand upon that a little bit?
Correct. I'm seeing, so that was pretty much the big driver that I saw as far as with the library and even town offices. The library was actually the most concerning. That building's relatively new. I mean, you guys remodeled it, what, within the past six years? You guys are having HVAC issues over there that just consumed the majority of their budget this last year. You shouldn't be having these problems. It's not like you guys went out and bought subpar items. You guys installed the best. You guys have trained, but there's definitely a little bit of a push from my end to Tom and Lisa over at the library to get together and guys figure out whether or not this is a one-time event. Is this something that, do we need to look, to go in there and actually spend money and get it fixed? What's the remediation?
Is that the $50,000 we already talked about earlier this year?
Yeah, and that's what they're working through, and some of the HVAC issues that we've talked about earlier.
Now, which one is that? Is that in the PNOs Maintenance, that 31-6, or where is that?
Library Buildings and Grounds. PNOs, P and OS, that's Park and Open Space Maintenance.
Parks and Open Space. Yep.
But library buildings, that's where you'll see that line item, Sean, under Library Buildings and Grounds. But you'll also see that we had a savings of $10,000 in our gas propane account in Eno Memorial Hall.
Yep.
So we are experiencing some savings on the gas side. We're also in the process of connecting the town highway garage to gas and working to get some of our gas connections for our residents, till we'll brief the board in September.
Yeah, there's a ton of stuff in here that makes sense. I mean, obviously, we had to buy more diesel, because we had to pull out more roads, because we had more snow.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
You guys are actually relatively energy-efficient by comparison to the last municipality.
We've done a lot. Haven't we done a lot with energy buying in terms of...
Yeah.
Tom's really spent a lot of time with consultants and other folks. And then obviously, the Police Department being under on their gases helped a lot as well. So what's the open space maintenance? Which, that's 31-6, that's a big number, too.
Correct.
Can I just bounce back? Sorry. Just, sorry, and just because it's on library, though. You have library admin number, and you also have a library building and grounds, but they both have equipment maintenance. Is that the same HVAC? They're two different? So can you, which one's the HVAC, the 17?
That is the Library Buildings and Grounds.
Right.
Okay, and then what's the 21-9 under the...
The 21, hold on, let me get back to that. I did not commit all this to memory, so I apologize. Next year, I'll be there. So you know what? I do not have the responsibility. I apologize. I'll get that printout and send it over to you.
Okay. What line item are we looking for?
This is the $22,000 on Equipment Maintenance. I want to say it was something to do with copiers, but that seems like a very high-dollar amount.
Other questions?
Yeah, because I don't know what that is, because originally, we had asked them to try to spread it out in their budget to cover the cost of the repair of that versus taking it out of reserves, which I think was the original plan.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was part of it, but obviously, they've done a nice job.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Sorry I interrupted you.
It was a good question. So the 31-653 in the open space maintenance?
Yeah, so I can give you a printout of that, but a lot of it is actually tree-cutting services. It's a lot of maintenance for open space that didn't seem to have budget.
And again, that was something that, as a result of the storms, because we tightened up other accounts, that we made sure that we were within budget, but it was something that had to be done. And it was, again, more winter damage than we had planned for. So that's something we're addressing through the Open Space Fund.
Yeah.
We're seeing that as a trend, that there's just more damage, and winters have more cleanup than we previously budgeted for.
Yeah, and that makes sense.
And I think the Board of Selectmen responded by budgeting more this year.
Yeah.
And so you'll see that next year, hopefully, we can stay within the budget for that.
Yeah, and we should really keep our eye on the law, because there was zero in that account, which is right.
I really caught my eye.
We went from zero to 32 grand.
Exactly.
31-5, whatever it is. Okay.
Just to call your attention to some of the positives, where we're able to transfer, again, trends, but not necessarily helpful trends for next year. We did have a number of vacancies that went unfilled, so we did have savings in those line items. Those positions have all been filled now, so you won't be seeing those savings at that level next year. The line item in the Director of Community Development account, that was funds that should have been paid for the Hartford Study that came out of a different account. So I don't want to leave the impression that there's additional funding in the Community Development line item that we can take next year, because that was money that was paid for out of, again, a different account. And that's why that funding is there. But we see the green, most of those savings, the gas propane in Eno, the part-time vacancy accounts in the library, that position's now been filled. The vacancies in the Police Department, those have now been filled, and the vacancies in the Planning Department have now been filled. So just to recap, the savings in legal really result from, a lot of work is being done in-house, thanks to Tom Cook and Sean Kimball. We're not farming out some of our labor. We have a contract for our general legal, but so that, this is an additional savings beyond that. So thanks to our staff for doing some internal savings. And also, elections, we budget the year before for the maximum number of elections that could occur through primaries and petitioning, and obviously, some of those primaries don't materialize. There is a Republican primary tomorrow, but there's not a Democrat, so that reduces the costs.
Yeah, we tried not to have one, sorry.
Yeah. Blame the Republicans on that one. So, you know, obviously, there's, you know, there's savings when we don't have primaries. But again, you have to budget for the situation where you will have them, and then if you don't, there's savings.
Understood. Yeah, there's a lot of bright spots. We save some money, it looks like, on the property casualty insurance.
Correct.
That we're gonna?
Yes.
Obviously, we got a little bit more comp, but good experience there. Yeah, and I think the big one was the police officers.
Yep.
Gas. That was, that's one I know the chief always sweats over.
Yep. So we had a better, you know, better experience. And then, really, the bulk of the expenditures were in costs that we didn't anticipate, and that is, you know, the overview, the finance director position was a big issue for the town, and we had a staff up. And the advertising, and the diesel, we had some expenditures in diesel, and I think that's pretty much the highlight. And then again, on the Social Service Department, that was just a budgeting error.
You guys actually have a cost-conscious police chief. I didn't know it existed. Congratulations.
Don't say that too loud.
More kudos for him for tonight, right?
Sorry, I've never given him a compliment to his face.
I just had a couple other questions. The highway facility, the labor and equipment in the facility and programs, so the monies that have gone in here, there's 15, 37, 22, I see 22 is actually streetlights, but we transferred money out of general fund to cover.
Correct.
That's not this.
A portion of it is. So you guys had an original memo that was put together by Tom.
Yeah.
We ran with that. That's the number we used, and we said, well, let's see how the end of the year worked. We had a couple storms after that event.
Right. So that was an estimate.
Correct.
Okay.
So they were probably entitled to an extra, like, $22,000, $25,000. I think that's what Tom ended up...
And what, just remind me again what we transferred out of the general fund to cover? That was at 107?
I'd have to grab the full amount, because I have, it's a big number, yeah.
Okay.
It was like 150 from contingency, 170.
But by the time, by the time we add in, the highway department will be 0.1% overall of their budget, based on the number of unprecedented storms. So that's not bad compared to the number of storms that we did.
No, and I just...
So I think that Tom did a great job of anticipating savings in other accounts to try to cover some of the costs.
And we actually knew it when we did the last transfers, but I, Tom, we didn't, what we didn't want to do was keep changing the number that comes back before you guys.
Right. Right. No, and I guess my, just sort of a...
Understood.
Summary on the 80,000 that went back, but we had taken...
Well, we aren't finished yet. Joe will still be closing the books, so we don't know, we don't know what we'll be giving back. It'll be at least eighty thousand.
Right.
So when we have the final accounting, and again, you'll see some transfers again in September, clean the books up, we'll have a final accounting of what the overall transfers in and out were for the bottom line.
And keep in mind, this is only the expenditure side that we're talking about giving back. Your revenue is excessively favorable.
Right. So we aren't even counting the revenues that we're giving back.
Yeah, and see sort of summary against that to say, to see what we transferred out of general funds to cover it and how it all washes with what we go back.
Absolutely.
You know, return back.
Yeah. We'll actually give you exactly, I'll give you the finance director report that I'll give to the Board of Finance next week.
That'd be great.
Great.
Can I just make a, so, streetlights, is there any way we can send Tom Roy down the road and looking at a way to save money on that?
He has. We've looked at buying streetlights. A lot of towns have purchased streetlights. It takes a large capital improvement plan expenditure. You actually have to put that in your capital plan, and it's a big number. And up until this point, it hasn't fit in the capital plan. But we can have Tom update the board during the process. Yes.
That'd be interesting to be, you know, creative. I mean, if we can spend money now to save fifty grand a year on whatever, I mean, we're dropping a hundred and thirty-two grand on streetlights. If we can smooth the, that'd be awesome.
I'll have Tom report out. We have looked at it.
That is a massive amount.
It's to issues.
We, you know, West Haven, we weren't anywhere in that ballpark.
It's huge. But we'll shock the board and get it.
And, you know, the conversation.
It's good to know.
It's cheap. It's, you know, we have reserves and there's lots of things we can, if they.
That would be a gift that we keep on giving, so.
No, you're exactly right, Sean. It's important to know the number and then see how it fits with our other priorities, that's all.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Can we have a motion to approve the intra, interdepartmental transfers first?
I move we approve the interdepartmental transfers for the thirteen, fourteen fiscal year.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And can we have a motion to approve the fiscal year intra department transfers as recommended by the finance director?
I'll move that we approve the two thousand and fourteen intra departmental transfers as recommended by the board.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
You, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Remind everyone, there'll be more coming in October once.
We're looking forward to it.
My memory's not that short, don't worry.
Thank you for hearing our way.
And, yeah, if anyone, I think this is really helpful, and Joe did a great job trying to simplify, simplify what's really complicated. But, you know, I think it's important that the public can see exactly what line items transferred, and I think it's a really good way of providing information, so thank you. Next item is to authorize an agreement with Charles Houlihan, Special Counsel, for the purchase of Ethel Walker Open Space Parcel C. We've been informed by a town attorney that they have a conflict representing the town in the Ethel Walker purchase. They have had a conflict previously, and Mr. Houlihan had been retained previously. So the town is recommending that we hire Special Counsel and that we would work with Mr. Houlihan, since he has the background to close, it's really just the closing on the parcel.
Do we have a fee agreement from him?
We need authorization to be able to have the agreement. We would, as we've done in the past, we have capped the fee at, at or below what town council charges us, the municipal rate. And that's what we have. I don't have the exact fee.
So I don't know what that number is?
I don't have, it would be low, less than what we're, less equal to what we're paying. But I don't have authorization from the board to retain him, so I can't report back.
Will we see the agreement when it comes, after we issue authorization? So then it will come back?
Yes.
But we won't need to approve it then, or will we need to approve it?
I would suggest the board authorize the retaining of counsel at or below the municipal rate.
Okay.
Because I can't tell you exactly what it is.
I'm good with that. The other question is, is this coming out of legal or is this coming out of the bond we're going to float for the land?
It's, I believe that when we budgeted, we budgeted for all costs. We usually do on all of our capital plans, so the funds should come out of that, but I can't, I have to go back and look at the bond language. Yeah. So it'll come out of the cost of that.
Sounds good.
Can I have a motion to approve an authorized agreement?
I move to authorize the First Selectman to authorize a fee agreement with Special Counsel Charles Houlihan.
Thank you.
A friendly amendment to cap it at the reduced municipal rate.
Thank you.
Or below.
Do we have a second?
We'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is to approve request from the Simsbury Performing Arts Center for the town of Simsbury to co-sponsor the September Fest fireworks contingent upon receipt of funds and bond requirement. If you recall, we previously approved the sponsoring, co-sponsoring of fireworks with the Performing Arts Center for the Fourth of July fireworks. And we've done this previously in the past. It's really a win-win. The town has control over where the fireworks are done, and we have safety control, but we don't pay for the fireworks, and we have private donations and bond requirements. So I would ask.
May I just address a one, the bond requirement was something that was under review by council. There is not, in fact, a bond requirement to this. We do have certificates of insurance and all the necessary steps have been taken to protect the county's financial impressed, and it's all in accordance with statute. But that was an outstanding question at the time this was presented.
Great, thanks for.
Just the only contingency would be receipt of funds.
So thanks, Tom, for the update, because we would just require whatever town council requires and stuff. Can I have a motion to approve the request from Performing Arts Center to co-sponsor the September Fest fireworks?
Move that.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is review and action on continuing town hall summer hours. We have completed the summer hall hours. Generally, the feedback has been positive. We did get some concerns expressed from the senior center, because there's line dance class that previously met on Friday afternoon and has been moved to Tuesday afternoon. And we did receive three letters of concern regarding that. Other than that, we, my office has not received any other complaints. We did have a lot of positive feedback. I know the staff would like to see it continued, and I'll bring it to the Board of Selectmen for action. I don't know what they want to do. Tom, I don't know if you have any other information.
I supplied you with all the feedback. We were supposed to solicit it when we first went to the hours. We did send out a news and announcement and press release. As Mary's summary is correct, there have been a couple of complaints, but on balance, it's been very well received. Sean's been able to work with some veterans on some veterans' issues that wouldn't have come up during regular business hours. So there are cases like that here and there.
I'll just add that also, Social Services instituted a dinner program, and it's the first time we've been able to do that. I want to thank Tom and Mary for putting this on the agenda. The Personnel Subcommittee did ask for an update in August before the Labor Day deadline that we had set for our evaluation, so I appreciate that follow-up.
Tom, just to follow up, when we first considered this, we talked about the attorneys and other professionals who use the town clerk's office. Did you get any response from anybody?
Not a lot.
Okay.
We would know if they were upset.
Well, I figured we might have heard, but.
That's drastic, but that's exactly, I mean, that was, I was anticipating if we heard it anywhere, it would be access to the town clerk. But I think that folks very quickly adapted to that, and the town clerk has indicated that things are just a little bit busier on Monday evenings than they have been. And it certainly is helpful then to have all three staffers there.
Is the board prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend the hours as we were operating over the summer.
To permanent?
To permanent, yes, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I will be abstaining, so I'll just query whether we have enough to vote, enough members to vote for. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, all. Thank you. Next item is a request for tax abatement. I'm going to recuse myself from this item, because the petitioner is a neighbor, and so I'll ask Nancy to take the chair.
All right, so we have before us a request to, for a hundred percent abatement of taxes from the firm C-Tech in its relationship with the skating center. And I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments?
I do.
Tom, you have something maybe.
Tom, do you want to comment on this first?
The short version of this is that you have the information provided in summary form is that for installations like the one that was up on the top of the skating center, for installations like that created after January one, two thousand and fourteen, there is a, they're tax exempt.
Automatically?
Automatically. So if C-Tech had put that on, if it finished their work instead of in October, if it finished at sometime two thousand and fourteen, this issue wouldn't be before you. There is a statutory provision that allows, allows you guys to determine whether or not you want to provide an abatement for the same situation. So that, in summary form, is where we are. And for what, the final piece is that C-Tech has provided all the information necessary to be considered for the abatement.
Don't we have an abatement process? Whereas OS, Port of Finance, isn't there an abatement committee that has to review these?
Well, that, I am not aware of one.
That's.
Is that the other abatement?
That's the tax, formal tax abatement program we have for businesses. We're going to go before the business.
New building or new construction, you can come in and ask for, what is it, a three-year deferral? Or a three-year abatement?
It's a, and I'm not sure, I know the percentage is off the top of my head, but it is a sliding scale of abatement for businesses. And you had a question on that one.
Well, just for Tom, could you just explain the ownership organization for this? I mean, it's, it's a little complicated, why the town is involved, the ISCC and C-Tech.
Right. In fact, the skating center as an entity is not involved. We are involved because this is on municipal property. It remains municipal property. The owner of the equipment is C-Tech. So essentially, they installed their equipment on the top of the skating center. And in the absence of the abatement, they would be required to pay tax on personal property. So I think that hit.
And they continue, they will continue to own it? So it is not going to transfer to the town, to skating center as less see, to anybody else? They continue to own that equipment?
That's correct.
Maintain it and reap whatever benefits they get?
Whatever benefits, I don't recall specifically the terms of the contract to be on this for the skating center.
I would assume they have an agreement with the skating center to provide power to the skating center, so the skating center is a party.
There was a benefit to the skating center in this. I just can't, I had to go back and study that agreement. The other, the other issue you have before you is the length of the abatement. You do not, you have to, you have some flexibility on that as well.
Well, I'll just, I mean, I don't know if you want to.
No, I just, just a couple other questions. When you talk about the other, had it been after the date, that there would have been an abatement, would it have been a hundred percent? And would it have been, how long would it have been?
In fact, it's, the property would be considered tax exempt, so there's no timeline or anything. It's just simply taken off the table altogether.
And I also think, I mean, just for the public, they, we just had the discussion around the solar program, and that folks should know that C-Tech is the company of choice the town is using currently. And I think it's just a note to be, yeah. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions?
I hate giving away tax money.
Well, and I have to say, that's one of the reasons why I am, I'm not in favor of doing this, is because we have already shown favor to C-Tech for good reason. They're, you know, an excellent supplier, and we have placed our trust in them to provide solar services to the town. And, and I'm happy about that, and I think we should support that. I do not think we should support favoring them over anybody else who might come afterwards, because they missed a deadline. I also think we, we opened the door to other companies or other requests, such as this, for abatement, you know, when, when they really don't qualify. And I have some concerns about that.
I mean, it's, it's sticky, because if somebody puts up solar tomorrow, they're automatically abated. We don't even get a say, right?
That's right.
If a business does.
Well, they're, they list the things that are open.
But if a resident puts solar on their house, they are going to be assessed for that, and they are going to pay property taxes on that, right?
No, that's not correct.
They're not?
It is not correct.
Oh, okay.
They're also not required to pay tax on that personal property.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Thank you.
The issue really is the.
That makes me feel better.
Person of this exemption, this is an abatement. It would have been much easier if the exemption had taken in more territory than it did.
Right.
Instead, the state has pushed the decision to you.
So nice.
Yeah.
The one thing I'll point out, and this goes to our state legislators, was very kind of them to pass an abatement that we absorb instead of them.
That we have to pay for, yeah.
And, you know, I would just encourage our legislators that they're, and I think it's worthy, you know, Solar Energy is worthy, that they're going to pass a law like that. It should be a credit on state taxes and not. But that said.
I'll co-sponsor that bill with you.
No, I totally agree with you.
But that said, because this would be, had they waited three months, they would have gotten it. It's, I'm hard-pressed not to vote in favor of it, because it was just a three-month thing. But Cheryl's right, it does set a precedent. It's worth sort of laying out the criteria, because it is something we would consider if there's somebody else who did it. We don't know how many, because it seems kind of limited as to which properties would, are open. But we should set a deadline or parameters to, if we do this, well, we will also grant it for other things that did it within the last six months or eight months or.
No, and I agree with you, yeah. But I just don't, you know, I get this uneasy feeling that we're rewarding them for not.
Meeting deadlines.
Meeting a deadline or, or not being aware of it, you know, when it happened. But that's, that's fine, but they're, you know.
Sort of a tough position.
Everybody, you know, there's deadlines, and they're there for a reason, and, you know, it happens all the time.
And all abatements are unfair to someone.
They're unfair to someone, and we're asking the taxpayers now to, you know, essentially absorb a cost that we would have collected taxes on that, and quite a bit. And I, I have trouble with that. It's a lot of money, and, you know, we, we just looked at our transfers, and, you know, we're struggling for every dollar. And to say that this company is, is going to get a freebie because, well, they were three months off, doesn't seem fair to me.
And I will say, it's not a tax reduction, it's just we're not getting the increase of revenues. So it's slightly different, but that said, everyone else who did it earlier had to pay.
Had to pay.
Right.
And they're paying their personal property taxes on it, so.
I mean, the squishy thing for me is, is this isn't a resident. This is a business who put a business plan together, made an investment, and obviously, taxes were part of that schedule of profitability.
Right.
Put up the array, and now they're going to make eighty-nine dollars more dollars.
Well, we made a mistake, but, you know, maybe we can get a little more out of this, and I'm.
So our loss is their gain.
So I'm going to be a pain. I think we ought to table this, because I'd like to talk to Attorney DiCrescenzo to make sure that we're not stepping into messy areas, just in case.
Any particular area that you want?
We say no to him, are we going to get sued for it?
If you say no to him.
Yeah. If we say no, are we going to, you know, I want to, I'd like to understand the legal ramifications of this decision, not only for this property owner, but potentially others, so.
And also what criteria, recommendation and criteria we should use? Because having done a little research on abatements, all of them say if you offer, you should have an objective criteria from which to evaluate each case and not do a case-by-case, or else you run the risk of.
Exactly.
This goes to my question of how many other businesses out there have solar panels that might have, you know, that may have put them on that would come to us after that decision's made.
I'm not trying to be a pain, I just.
No, I didn't.
I don't want to say no tonight, when we really ought to be saying yes. I'd rather, I'd rather spend some, some more time looking at this one.
I mean, there is a statute, and it's, we have to apply it. That's what the statute says, and I think we should have every bit of information we can have before we do that, and.
And a recommendation and criteria that we should consider.
So I'll ask the town council to identify potential risks?
Yep.
And if he thinks it's relatively risk-free, what criteria you would use to.
Evaluate this in future, in future applications? Because we should apply the same standard to whoever applies.
I agree.
Well, and that's, sort of goes to the tax abatement program we have, which sets those standards for applying for abatements. But I'm also curious, would this really qualify for that? So in other words, if we say no, could they go for an abatement through our tax program? So in other words, if we say no, could they go for an abatement through our tax program? Or would it actually fall under our infrastructure program that we used to have that we don't have anymore? And it's more of a curiosity on my part for...
My memory's a little fuzzy on that. I don't think it does, because I think there has to be a percentage investment to the relative cost of the building. And it's like, basically Hoffman had to redo their whole property to get one. It's a lot of dollars. And this, I think it's, I think this one's going to be different, but, good question.
Counsel was aware and had prepared a resolution for you for tonight's meeting, so he'd already basically sanctioned this as the right process.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it wouldn't fall under either of those? All right, so...
Well, and just because he explains the process does not mean we're going to agree anyway. But that's, I just want to be clear that we still need to...
You're seeking a motion.
Yeah.
And the only other tag on it, and again, I'm sure David's busy with end-of-the-year stuff and taxes and everything else, is just, any, does he have an idea how many others might be out there?
Sure.
Because again, I think that would help us with the scope if, all right, it's 80 grand. Okay, we understand it's 80 grand. If it turns into 800, it's, you know, we, I think we just need to pause and make sure we know what we're getting into here.
Okay.
Not implying that we don't, but sometimes it's better just to slow down a little bit.
So would you like to make a motion to table?
Move that we table this pending the information we just asked for.
Do you want to second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, two passes.
Do you want to ask Mary?
Go get the boss.
Don't tell her what we did or never what we did or... I hate giving away to anyone.
I read the statute. It's ridiculous.
Glad one of us understands the statutes. That's why I like you. You and Lisa can under, you guys understand the statute, you can translate for me.
Distress in your municipality sessions, I would...
I appreciate that.
That's the answer. And modified a cruel account, so even if this comes in, it doesn't matter, I still post it to the fiscal here. But I'll explain. There's a good side that you should be faithful about, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Get your managerial accounting book out and some caffeine.
Yeah.
Actually, you're probably going to need...
I had to ask, right? Is it warm in here or is it...
No, it feels good.
I know, you were chilly before, right?
I think so.
It could just be me.
You got, we got...
Tom Roy's at home watching us changing the...
Giving it to...
Changing the temperature on his iPad, right?
Yeah, he's probably watching from home.
I know.
He's trying to sweat us out.
Tell Mary she can come back.
That's what Tom...
Oh, okay. She just walked by.
Oh, did she? I don't think he checked the lid.
That would be a different litigation. Not go there.
You know, I don't have to write it. You know, we spent over a million dollars on that pool last year.
No, not the, that's Memorial. You should have seen the pool. It's a black hole. It's a mole.
Why are all of these...
Yeah, but we put it in the van last time, so now we need to put somebody in the van for us to translate.
All right. So next item is appointments and resignations. The first is accept a resignation of Jackie Bados as an alternate from the zoning board of appeals. And in the next motion, we'll be pointing her to the zoning commission. Can we have a motion to approve?
Move to accept her resignation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to appoint Jaclyn Bados as an alternate member of the zoning commission with expiration date of December 7, 2050.
Move that we approve?
Excuse me, folks, the town clerk's having a hard time, the clerk's having a hard time here.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
I made that motion to approve.
Thank you.
And I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to accept the resignation of Paul Sarkis as a regular member of the technology task force with our thanks.
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is to accept the resignation of Andy Burling as a member of the technology task force with our thanks.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The technology task force does have appointments that they worked on earlier this evening. Is that right, Lisa?
They are not ready for our approval, but they did, as you know, Tom sent out an email asking for specific qualifications, and they did review the, those who responded.
Great.
And I did not participate in that since it's coming before us later.
So we'll be getting some new members, so not to panic.
Right.
Okay. Last is to accept the resignation of Janice Kern as a regular member of the recycling committee with our thanks.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is sensory farm swimming accommodations for seniors. I want to thank all the seniors who came out tonight and who contacted us earlier to ask if we could restore adult lap swim in farms. I did, Jerry, unfortunately Jerry Toner's not available tonight. He has had a scheduled vacation for tonight, so he's not here to answer. But as a result of the request, I did meet with Jerry and asked him to reinstate those laps. He informed me that the Parks and Rec Commission had, as a result of the special revenue fund, had contracted out that time for adult swim to the exercise classes. I met with Dave Bush from the Parks and Recreation Commission, asked them to restore the hours as well, and they indicated that they had already plugged in the numbers for the exercise classes to close the gap on the special revenue fund. So at this point, the Parks and Rec Commission, Chairman Dave Bush and Jerry said that there was, the board of selectmen would have to appropriate funds to make up the loss of funds for the exercise class. I asked Jerry to go back and meet with the commission to make recommendations for how we could restore the lap swim and that the memorial pool was not working for our seniors. And they said they were trying it, and the commission heard from the seniors that it was not working. And next year, we're going to try to figure out another way to plug that gap. But they had given away that spot to the exercise classes, and it was a revenue fund. So if the board at this point would like to direct additional funds to provide that adult lap swim, I don't know if we could do it from now to the closing of the pools, but that would be something the board would need to appropriate.
Would it be possible? I don't know how many people are in the exercise area when they're doing it, but to do as this, I think, oh, your husband suggested. When I, believe it or not, I spent many years on a swim team, and...
Can you speak louder, please? I can't hear you.
Yes. I spent many years on a swim team in my youth. And there was adult swim during different activities. So if they reserve one or two lanes for adult swim during the adult exercise class, would that impede the exercise class? Could you accommodate both, I guess?
I think that Jerry said that one lap could be, one lane could be accommodated, but I think the feedback from some of the swimmers is that one lane was not acceptable, would not work. So I don't know if that's true.
Well, would that be better than nothing? That would be...
I mean, I don't think that we're having a dialogue tonight, but I think certainly I could revisit that. My understanding from Jerry was that that was an option, but that was not going to work for the seniors that he spoke to.
And would you like to ask something?
At this point, we're just having the discussion of the board.
You mentioned appropriating more funds, how much money would happen?
So Jerry was going to work on the additional, what it costs for the exercise. Again, he's not here, so, you know, I can't speak to the exact amount. But it was, it was a decision of Parks and Rec Commission, and it was, you know, I did ask them to go back and reevaluate it, and they indicated that they would, but there would be a cost problem for that.
We've got two problems.
You know, probably is not significant, but they did plug it in as an exercise class.
So we got two problems, all right?
I'm a little more concerned about the seniors who, and some of them contacted me, with their concerns about the conditions at Memorial. And I know we had, you know, I, when I was talking to some people, we discussed, you know, maybe you could switch, have lessons or exercise class at Memorial and let the swimmers do lap swim at the farms, because the farms is more conducive to lap swimming. And that brought up the discussion of the conditions at Memorial being inadequate and safety concerns. And that was what sort of drove my concern, because I'm very concerned that there's, you know, people who now feel that they cannot go to Memorial because it's not safe, and that concerns me.
Well, first of all, excuse me.
But I'm...
Wait a minute, please. Cheryl, I just want to have it quiet so I can hear you.
Yeah, I know.
No, I appreciate that. That, safety concerns are certainly, first time we've heard that. We did spend a significant amount of money on Memorial Pool.
Yeah, I know.
So we'll get back to the board on that first thing in the morning. That's the first, this is the first I've heard about safety concerns, so I appreciate hearing that. But that, that's the first I've heard of it.
That's fair.
So if those concerns have been addressed previously, I'm not aware of them, so we'll take care of that.
No, I'm here.
I know, again, Jerry's not here. You know, the board's asking the same thing I asked of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we have a Parks and Rec Commission, because they're supposed to be recommending to the board of selectmen. We don't micromanage what the board does, but certainly if they're not doing what we think they should be doing, obviously, we will. So...
My only concern is that, yeah.
Happy to have two things. I think I'll have Jerry come back to the board of selectmen with a report. He'll be back Wednesday, so we'll get an update. In the short term, we can go back and look at one lane if that's, if that's something that could be accommodated. I know, you know, I see, I see some faces.
It's not ideal.
People did not want that. So, you know, it's about compromising. I think it's clearly not working. It's not something this board would support. Next year, we were not aware of it because we weren't told during the budget process that this change was going to be made.
No, we weren't.
So it's a little disappointing to us, I think, as policymakers, that we weren't given the option before. So, you know, we were all at the budget hearing, so we all asked those tough questions. All I can say at this point is, you know, have Jerry and the Parks and Rec Commission come back to us. We'll make it clear that's not an acceptable option to us, and find out what alternatives, first is a safety issue, and then what alternatives that we can find to make sure that we address properly the adult lap swim.
Also, just, it says...
Drawn and then answered.
Can I just be a little bit more direct, Mary? I mean, just have Jerry fix it. I mean, you don't need the board's authorization. Just have Jerry fix it. I mean, Jerry runs the facility, so have Jerry fix it.
Yeah, I just, the board of selectmen's going to have, the board of selectmen's going to have to appropriate money. So if this board is saying we will, we will appropriate money if we need to, then that's fine.
If that's the fix, then, but don't, I don't want to wait until September, because then it's moving over.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if the board wants to authorize funding, we can do that. I don't know, the practicality is, people pay to be in those exercise classes, so to say, fix it by throwing them out and bring...
And I don't, I don't mean that's the fix.
I know.
If we can put them up Memorial and make everybody happy.
I don't want to represent something that we can't give.
But, I mean, I trust, I trust you and Jerry to fix it. It's, and if you need 5,000 bucks from this board, bring it back.
Yeah, it's just, I'm not sure it's that, again, I don't run the Parks and Rec Department. Jerry does, and Jerry's, and the Parks and Rec Commission have been told to fix this and to put the adult lap swim, and they've told me that this point, they've contracted out the exercise classes.
Okay.
They've gotten feedback that it's not working.
I'm not implying anything, I'm not...
No, no, I, I just...
I trust Jerry to fix it, let's let him fix it.
I will have Jerry do a detailed memo on Wednesday when he gets back about how we can temporarily fix this and what the overage will be.
What do we need to do?
So I just want to make sure the public knows if there's some costs.
Absolutely.
And I would encourage all those people who are...
The safety happens first.
Right.
Absolutely. No problem. Thanks, Bill.
Yeah. I would just encourage all the people who spoke to us tonight to bring their concerns to the Parks and Rec Commission also. You can make your wishes and concerns known to them so that they hear it directly from you, and that might be helpful as we move forward to make new policy for next year.
I think it's important that, you know, we get really more detail from the commissions before they make decisions that impact the town without us knowing.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's a concern. Why, you know, why weren't we given the option during the budget process to be told that there was going to be a change in adult swim? And until, you know, residents brought to our attention, I didn't know, and the board didn't know. So, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not proper way we do business. We usually make those policy decisions at a board level. So, you know, I'm sorry for the inconvenience. I know it was not ideal for many folks, and we're going to make sure we address it. If we can address it in the short term, we will, now that we have the board's support for additional funds. And we'll let, I have, I have the numbers of those who contacted me, so I can get back to you and get information out to folks if we need to make a change.
How long is the swim season? How long is the pool open?
Another couple of weeks.
Yeah, just a couple of weeks before school starts.
Yeah.
I think there was one other question I wanted to raise, that when it does rain, in order to save money, the pool is closed. So if there are only a few people there and the weather does get bad, it does close. Again, that's a budget issue and a policy decision that we, that Jerry and the Parks and Rec Commission have followed in the past. So if the board wants to revisit that, let me know, and we'll find a cost associated with that. It's a tough balance, because we're putting pressure on the Parks and Rec Commission to control costs.
Mm-hmm.
And if the, if the pool's open with two or three people in it, then you have to weigh weather. It's fair to the taxpayers to stay open with one or two people in bad weather.
That's fair. And I think that's part of the larger conversation we're going to be having with respect to the revenue fund in general.
Yeah, exactly.
So my final comment, Mary, would just be, I know we're talking about safety, and that is extremely important, but something we can do tomorrow as well is address the lack of cleanliness at Memorial Pool.
Yeah, that's, again, the first I've heard of that, too.
Right, right.
So we'll make sure we do an inspection first thing and see, see what we find, and we'll report back to the board.
Yep.
Thank you for coming, and thanks for your concerns, and we appreciate your time. Good to see you. Okay, acceptance of minutes, the regular meeting on July 14. Are there any minutes?
There was a, I'm sorry. I have one.
Any changes, corrections?
Yes, on page four.
You want a motion? I'll make a, yeah. I wasn't there. I'm abstaining.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Someone want a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the minutes by Lisa, second by Cheryl.
I have a change on page four. Under C, there is not match on this grant, there is no match on this grant.
Right. Thank you. Any other corrections, changes?
On page eight, they referred to, I know it's confusing with two cooks in the room, but Mr. Cook is referred to as Ms. Cook, I think, following me.
Thank you.
Too many cooks in the kitchen.
All in favor, say, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions?
I abstain.
I'll just have Tom check, I don't know if three votes is enough.
Three.
And if it isn't, we'll have it back. Thank you. Special meeting of July 24th, can I have a motion?
I'll, so move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I abstain.
I'm sorry.
Um-
I'm sorry, I have to abstain, too. I was not here for that either. I apologize.
How many abstentions? Three? Two.
Two.
And one absent. We'll, we'll check and see if that, they may come back to us.
Mr. Cook, do we have the abstention rule?
Three, I, two abstentions.
Two abstentions and only three.
Well, we had a, I think we had this discussion, if you review the minutes, and you, even if you weren't there, am I remembering that wrong?
You may vote to approve minutes even if you're not there.
Even if you were not there.
That is correct.
Your choice.
Can I move that we reconsider?
I actually would move to reconsider both sets then, because you had mentioned on that first set that you thought-
Yeah, I'm not sure. I just don't know the answer.
Do you wanna just table these and approve them at the next meeting?
I guess it's a question of whether the board feels comfortable approving minutes of meetings they weren't at.
Correct.
But it's up to you.
No, I am comfortable with that. I don't, you know, if everyone that was here reviewed the minutes, they've made the changes they feel are appropriate, I'm, I'm more than happy to do that, so that we can get them, you know, up for.
So the motion is to reconsider both minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to approve the July 14th minutes?
Move that with the changes we previously discussed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next meeting is special meeting of July 24th. Motion to approve? No, I did July 14th.
She, she, motion to reconsider.
Reconsider it, oh, okay.
Yep. And now we have to approve them.
Mm-huh.
Special meeting of July 24th.
I move to approve those.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Liaison and subcommittee reports, any reports?
Yes, I have explained the reports. As Tom mentioned, and Mary mentioned earlier, the technology committee did need, and to review some of the submissions of people who would like to serve on the technology committee, those will be coming before this board in September. One of the things the technology committee did, and you have this given to you, is when we voted on the budget, we voted on a consulting fee, and they are going to use part of their consulting fee through the, I'm gonna try and look for network systems assessment proposal for the town, it's very by, and I'm looking for the name of it, CAT, Connecticut Center for Advanced Technology. And this is a CROG entity, so it came in at forty-eight hundred dollars, and they, because it is CROG, they do their own RFPs, and they go out to bids for the town, so it does comply with our bidding policy, and it came in with a very low rate, and the committee unanimously felt that this was appropriate. So it does not need our approval, 'cause we already voted to allocate the funds, but I did wanna update the board on this, and thank the technology committee for their continued work on that. What they'll be doing with that is basically doing a strategic plan for our technology infrastructure, so look at what we have, where we wanna go. It's a, it's kind of a high-flying look, and look at what we need, and it's using an entity that has expertise with municipalities and libraries, so they're very excited about that, so therefore I am, and we're looking forward to that. I went to give an update from our public safety subcommittee, had a very heavy agenda at that time. We had a, I wanna thank Jeff for coming, it was the first time he came as our town engineer, and he gave a wonderful update on where we were with the generators. And I did ask Jeff, through Mary, to give the board a formal update, but that will be ready in September, 'cause they're still getting some of the bids. We do anticipate that we will be short on what is needed. The board of finance did ask us to come up with a number, they came up with a number, but it was not a hard number. Some of the initial estimates are coming in a little higher than we anticipated, than what we budgeted for. So they're doing their due diligence and working very hard to look at grants and what other cost-saving options. So they'll come back to us with hard numbers in September.
Which generators are those listed?
Well, the, at the high school, they, one of the recommendations was another two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt generator, and that's a little bigger than we had anticipated. They already have one two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt generator, and so they recommended a higher one. And then Terrifield School.
Yeah, the Terrifield one, we've, I mean, we've talked, we've been talking about the Terrifield one for a couple of years, right?
What, what we've done is gone out to bid now, and the exact cost. I think what, what happened, as Lisa said, was the board of finance gave an est, we gave an estimate to the board of finance, but now we're coming in with hard bid numbers, and they're higher than what we anticipated.
All right, 'cause those funds were not even listed, they were the year before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're from a couple of years ago.
So we are, they are working on that. It was a priority of the public safety committee that this be put on our agenda, and after speaking with Jeff, Tom, and Mary, it will be ready to be on our agenda in September. But I did wanna give the public and this board a heads-up, that there will likely be a shortage of funds that we'll have to evaluate. The other thing, we've got updates from Chief Baldess, who talked about the need for residents to clear fire hydrants. It's, you know, all the beautiful decorative grass is lovely, but we do need a five-foot clearance there, so that our responders can find the area. Chief Ingerson gave us an update on naloxone or Narcan, which is the drug used for heroin addictions, and they, he stated that they've begun training with that, and that there are some issues that they're still looking at how to overcome, because in terms of how it's stored, there has to be a certain temperature, so it can't be too hot or too cold, so how do they accommodate that in the winter and in the summer months? So they are working on that. And they're also looking at where it's going to be stored in Town Hall, and, as well as the cost of the drug. So they're doing their formal evaluation. I would like to thank the chief for his initiative on that. The police department also received training at the end of May for the Project Lifesaver, which is to help assist people who have Alzheimer's or perhaps autism, help locate them. It's a locator project, and how, how to use it and how to work on it. They are looking to raise eight thousand dollars, so they don't have to ask payments from the users, so they're looking at options there. We did review, the state put out recommendations in terms of what sort of training both the schools and the town need in terms of getting ready for disasters. I mean, I will say we are very ready for disasters in practice, but there were, we're looking at the requirements, making sure that we've got all the training that they recommend, and you do this for several reasons. One, you need the training to respond for disaster. We already know that we can respond well, so we've got that box checked. But you, but you also do need some of these training certificates to apply for grants, or for risk management and insurance needs. So we're looking at the whole package, what do we need, one, to respond to an emergency, two, to apply for grants. So we're doing a review of all that, to make sure all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. Then I just wanted to give an update, 'cause I had a little crazy amount of updates, sorry about this, in August, I don't know how that happened, that the public school, Sinsbury Public Schools announced that they are going to be renovating the Sinsbury High School track and turf field, and it's going to begin, you know, unfortunately, after August 13, with an estimated reopening date of September 21, 2014. And so they're gonna be doing track resurfacing and turf rehabilitation. And these are important, not only to the maintenance of the track, but also to safety. You have to have a certain level of cushion to avoid concussion, so it, they have to do it. Part of the reasons why it has to be done now, as opposed to why wasn't it done over the summer, has to do with, in part, with our budgeting process and when we pass budgets. And two, when they did the turf, they advertised it in June, but no bids were received, and so they had to go out to rebid, so that delayed the process. And they can't do the two projects at the same time, because heavy equipment is needed to work on the turf, and they can't operate while the track is being resurfaced and sprayed and restripped. So there, there, you would think this would be an easy thing to take care of over the summer, it was actually very complicated, and they're asking for the community's patience as it's closed for these necessary improvements, and obviously they'll be working with other schools to accommodate schedules, and we appreciate their efforts. And it is not only just a maintenance thing, but it's also a safety issue, so we're pleased that this is being attended to.